To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the September 22nd meeting. It's a work session for Tufton Borough Board of Selectmen. First issue is, and I'll read the motion.
Oh.
Okay. "Selectmen, all be moved to direct department heads to give step increases to each employee concurrently their service anniversary date, seconded by the selectman's legacy. After some discussion, this motion was tabled to allow for employee re-employment." Anything the board wants to say?
How about if we invite people here to come down to the table and have a discussion?
I think that's great. Come on down.
We're just watching.
It just happened to be...
Well, I'm here on behalf of all of the employees at the library whose anniversary dates are not in January, which is everyone. Just to ask how we plan to make it fair.
I think we plan to make it fair right now for everyone. So no one's different. I mean, maybe somebody's anniversary date is in January and another person's anniversary date is in June, but they're both going to be considered the same. In other words, their annual step increase or whatever we're going to do is going to happen yearly at that time, so...
So someone whose anniversary date is in December needs to wait an entire year for that year's raise?
Couldn't be.
I don't see how that's fair. To the people who are working now, I can see you starting that as a policy for new hires, but I don't see how in the upcoming year, you say, okay, everyone who's eligible is getting a step raise, but you're getting yours in January and you're getting yours in December, and the December person is then a year behind everybody else who got the raise for that year, unless you plan to give it all in December, and then there's a huge tax.
Yeah, but there's no... You're not going back, right? You're not doing the retroactive, as hard as that goes.
Okay. So then you're a year behind, effectively. Everyone else in your cohort board who gets a step for 2018, you get yours, and somebody gets theirs in January, and you get yours in December, so you're a year behind.
I guess if... I'm not a real great one for dealing with hypotheticals, so if you have people, we need to know their anniversary date. So if there is a dramatic impact, then obviously we're going to have to take that into consideration.
December 1st. Eighteen years on the job.
The other part of this discussion is, I'm not a great fan of automatic step increases on an annual basis. I mean, I've made that clear on many number of occasions, that increases in pay, other than COLA, which keeps you ahead of time, are premised upon increases of abilities to offset the need for expanded payroll. That's the only reason you do that, other than, I mean, you get some longevity pay, but annual step increases need to be premised upon the idea that we have X number of employees doing the job of the town. To avoid having X plus three employees doing the job of the town, if our current employees can keep their skill levels up and keep ahead of it, then we can keep our payroll level static, or our number of employees static, and hence save the town money. That creates a need for a step increase, because now that person has stepped up to the game. That's the premise I'm working under now. I'm only the one selectman.
Well, I take a slightly different view of that, that the step increase reflects the two things. The increased value of that employee to the town, and there are certainly ways to measure and demonstrate that. And one of the ways, of course, that from time to time we haven't had the best experience with is the completed performance review. There has been, in some areas, issues with timely completion, which is unfair to the It also keeps us as a town competitive with other employers that that individual could go to work for in the area. So how much of that is exactly, is precisely because somebody has learned more and can offset the need for additional hours or workers? And how much of it is, we want our person doing this job, in this job for X years, to not look around and say, you know, if I go over here, I'm going to leave here and go there and make a lot more money? Because if we're losing a well-functioning, good employee and hiring somebody new coming in, that's additional cost and disruption to us that does not benefit well to the town. So it is important for the employee to continue to grow in the job, and part of the step increase is reflective of that. But there's another piece in there that's, how do we stay competitive in our marketplace? And if there aren't those increases available, then pretty soon, the individual who's performing well, that's motivated, goes to the next town or two towns over and works.
Well, again, I appreciate the need to retain employees. I wasn't too cold about that. That it's more valuable to keep a fully trained employee than it is to train them all.
Yes, it's good business sense, to keep a good employee. Yes.
So whether the step increase comes at the anniversary date or on January 1st, what I hear you saying, Christie, is changing from what's been done to a different approach creates a transitional effect on everybody that's currently here. And if we don't want to say, well, we're doing this because it's all about saving a few bucks for the town, then we need to have an appropriate way to deal with that transition, and I don't know what that is.
Well, there may not be a transition. I mean, I made a motion that...
Right. I'm just saying, if, right, if we adopt the change, then there's a transition and we have to...
But if we take Christie's example, for instance, let's say there's an individual that we hire in February, and they've been here a year. I mean, how do you balance that person who's only been here for 13 months against somebody who's been here for decades? That's sort of where I was... One of the things I was trying to get to as well, is that we need to, I mean, we need to have our wages be market value wages, that we're going to lose people, but we also need to figure out some policy as far as how we're going to handle these steps. And maybe, you know, mine was a motion, but it's like this, it's just ink.
I have another question, which is, if step increases are not tied to annual performance review, then why are we doing annual performance review?
Or you can turn the question over and say, if step increases are tied to performance reviews, why are we doing performance reviews?
We are.
You are currently... I'm not certain I've seen all of them. Maybe I'm just missing some, but...
No, we don't see library ones, because it's library work, but we do see...
I haven't seen all the police reports yet.
There's four missing.
Now, as far as, would that also pertain to COLA, as far as you would get it in December?
No.
No, the COLA applies to everybody for the whole year.
And that's, I mean...
Because I could see that that would be unfair.
That presumes our wage scale is market value, at which point all you're trying to do is stay ahead of inflation, or at least not let your employees go backwards.
The COLA was voted on at 1.2%, and that would be effective... Let me get my notes. To employees in good standing, retroactive to the 1st of January after town meeting. It's retroactive.
Because I could see where that would be unfair to someone that was hired in December, because they'd get a month.
And I'm not, I mean, I don't know, because I have to ask my fellow selectmen. If we, let's assume that we voted on that motion and it passed. There has to be some input from the budget committee as well. I mean, we're not creating a budget of wages that reflects this move.
Whatever we vote on is reflected by the budget committee. Yes.
So they could change that as well?
They have in the past, yes. The budget committee member once, a couple of years ago, took one individual, added $7,000 to their wages.
Well, to the budget line for the wages, right.
And maybe, and maybe that's the route we should take, is to say, okay, let's take a look at the steps and see what sort of effect it's going to have, and then get into a discussion with the budget committee about... I mean, I can't imagine there's no way we're going to hurt if we change it, so...
He said it nicely, transition. I'd like to speak. I have never operated in anything other than a merit increase in COLA system exactly that you have. Thirty-seven years prior to me moving back to Tufton Borough, four different organizations, it always was that way. This gentleman came in March, he got his merit increase in March. You came November 1st, you got yours November 1st. And three out of those four places I worked is, you didn't just show up and get your merit increase, you needed to bring something to the table. It was a folder. What class did you take? What new project did you undertake? So I came to the Board of Selectmen five and a half years ago, expecting this, anticipating that, and working toward it. The first couple of years, well, you know, they're so underpaid, let's retroactive back to January 1st. My first year here is when on January 1st, an aberration took place. Bush tax cuts evaporated. The state retirement system, instead of changing in July, changed to January 1st. And it was the big rubout with the municipal association being sued by the AJ, and rates went up in January that year. Kathy Pounder came to me and said, Lloyd, every single member in town is losing $17 a week. I went to DRA and I said, you know, I'm going to change the motion and make this, everything retroactive to January 1st. And they set off the record, well, we won't get to it till August, go ahead and do it. So I've been trying to balance what my philosophy is, and balance, you know, about the people who are my friends, who I work with. And I hope I'm not so dogmatic that I close my mind. One additional point is, the Board of Selectmen, the powers to be in this town, took a lot of shit. And I'll say that right on TV. When other people, when other people, we needed to have this big investigation onto what were wages, and it was accompanied by other towns are using again and again and again. And guess what? Our employees got back in line and were now competitive. At that time, three, four employees had already left for the town of Wolfboro and had taken the exact same job they had in Tufton Borough, $10 more an hour. There were two other people under contract in Tufton Borough that were thinking of moving to Wolfboro. The fact of the matter is, the compensation study corrected a lot of that. Now I have the dilemma. I support your motion. It bothers me as a person that, how do we transition to this? And that's where I'm at, and I'm 50/50 on the question right now.
So here's what I'm going to suggest.
Thank you for listening.
Here's what I'm going to suggest, is that we need to study the transitional effect. Maybe get the company that did the compensation program for us to give us some information about that before we move off of what we've been doing. Not because tying a step increase to anniversary date is wrong, but if we do that without taking the effect on the current employees into account, the biggest message we're sending to those people is, the town is saving a few dollars at your expense. That, you know, regardless of whether, however many years ago, when somebody came to work here, we came into a situation and started doing the January 1 thing. Where we are today, that's where we have to work from our current situation going forward. So if we're going to go to an anniversary date step increase, we need to have a plan in place to deal with that. And my belief is that to understand that in time to get into the budgets for this year would be a tall order.
It does make budgeting a little more difficult, doesn't it? I mean, what if you plan for, I don't know, what if somebody doesn't measure up when the time comes? How do you, I don't know.
Well...
Very simple, they don't get their merit increase. It's had, in my five years as selectman, it's happened, where we've called an employee in and say, there's some deficiencies here. Until this gets straightened around, there's no merit increase this year. And, you know, it's not a lot of fun for us, it's not a lot of fun for me, the employee, but I will tell you, in the five years that I've been here, I've worked with four of the selectmen, and when the door was closed, they've stepped up and looked the people in the eye, and I'll stand tall with them.
The unfortunate circumstances you find yourself in as a public employee, the highway worker leaning on a rake, the police officer drinking coffee eating donuts. The public perception of, you got an easy job and you're on the public dole, is out there. So we need to have a proactive approach on how to combat that, if you will, of saying, no, our employees are doing X, Y, and Z, and here's the proof of it, and this is how we compensate for it, and it's all very above board, and it's all structured so that we're getting a day's work for a day's pay.
You know, I'm a taxpayer too, and I would like to know exactly how much money we will save by doing this.
I don't know that we'll save anything.
So the point of doing it is, what?
Well, I think it's two different things. One, you've got, you know, you're attaching merit increase, assuming that you're going to give one, as far as to your employees and stuff like that. And two, the whole anniversary thing is something totally different, because we've never done that in the past. How does that, how does that benefit the town as far as, besides that you're going to save, like with hers, you're going to save her increase because you're only going to pay her a month?
You're going to retroactive her increase, and let's take the increase off the table here. You've got 15 employees or 17 employees, whatever it is, and department heads and all the rest of it, that you need to review. And I think that the performance reviews start to become just a cursory discussion over the, around the table. My thought had been originally that, no, if we go to an anniversary date, now I know you're December, let's say, now I know you're coming in, now we can fully prepare for what we're going to do. And we're not just, you know, the step increase doesn't just become another part of the budget, it becomes a real issue or a real question or a real event. And it isn't an event now, we're giving step increases to everybody. And we don't have the time in the fall, the budget season and all the rest of it, to actually fully interview all of our employees and their department heads. There's a, you know, question about a certain employee, what we're going to do. I mean, we don't have the luxury, if you will, to fully examine what has you, I mean, you bring in some, I don't have to believe it, but you bring in certificates of achievement from some of your workers or your firemen. I know Lloyd looks at them because he's a fireman. I look at him and say, well, thank you very much, but I don't calculate who did what, because I just got other things I'm doing.
See, I don't bring that stuff in.
Well, maybe you don't bring it up.
I know that Andy, I know Andy, maybe Clay does, but to me...
You do it in your weekly...
We give weekly stuff, or as far as, you know, once a month, but otherwise it's filed in there.
But you should, you should be able to come in and defend a step increase. You don't have to do that now. You just, it just happens.
Oh, if you decide to get one.
No, no, it's individual employees.
Probably, maybe what we need to do is, we need to schedule in the next couple of months, individual meetings with individual department heads, and sit down and talk with them about their employees, and just have that give and take with the department head on their employees as we're going through to the end of the year, to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, my view with respect to performance is, somebody is going to perform well enough to continue to step up, or they're going to have deficiencies. And if they have deficiencies, it's probably one cycle, and if they have deficiencies a second cycle, they need to go someplace else.
They need to go to position.
Huh? You know, this is not a, should not be a system where cycle after cycle, somebody only gets a COLA increase rather than a step increase because they, their performance is not to the rate. Somebody has performance issues, department heads, and we need to deal with it and help that individual address them. And if they're not willing to or not able to, then, you know, it's time for them to move along and for us to move along, you know, and it benefits the organization, benefits taxpayers as well. So, but...
I mean, I don't think I, just to reiterate or reiterate one thing that Adam said, I don't really see this as a money-saving opportunity, so much as a tightening up the...
No, but other people do. But if we're going to change the way we're doing the compensation, then it does change the amount of money involved, and it's more of a direct impact to the individual who's not receiving that increase. And so if we're going to do that, how do we do that? Maybe, you know, a suggestion was made that if we want to go to an anniversary date, that we do it for new hires, and that we deal with current town employees in the way we have in the past. But the conversations with department heads and as appropriate with individual employees relative to performance and continuing performance and performance improvements absolutely are things that need to happen.
See, with myself and my one employee, it doesn't affect us that much, because we were hired in March. But if you're hired in December, I can see where it would make a huge difference to people. The other thing that I have a hard time with, and I had a hard time with it last year, is giving myself a raise, being a supervisor. I don't think that that's my...
No, we should give you a raise.
Responsibility.
You should give yourself a raise.
So I think that's kind of, it just doesn't seem like...
That's why we pay the big bucks.
And the fact of the matter is, we do give you the raise. Now, you incorporate it in your department budget, okay? But all of the raises are signed off on by the Board of Selectmen.
But the discussion we should have with you, I mean, if you feel like you need a pay increase, you need to come forward and say, boss, I need some more money.
Right.
And then we have the discussion and we improve it and everybody goes forward. One of the other things that I brought up, and I'll gladly table my motion for...
Further study.
Further study, was bi-weekly payroll. And that will save the town money, and that is something that is going to happen this year, and there's a process that...
That you work through.
Yeah, because you've got to ease people into it. But we don't need to add anybody here in the office, we don't have to add a new employee, but we need to free up time. And if she's doing payroll place every week, that's a block of time that's getting used up. If she does payroll every other week, then we've got that block of time from the previous week free for other work, whether it's welfare or budgets or whatever it might be.
Makes sense to try it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, this is the only governmental operation that I can put out that isn't bi-weekly or monthly, I mean, the judicial system's monthly.
Well, could I ask you to look into it so that...
Yeah, Karen and I are already...
So that, this is what I'm thinking, effective January 1st, we'll move into it?
We can't. It'll take us all of '18 to make it work, because you have to, the employees are getting paid every weekend, they got bills today, and they generally spend all their money paying bills, so...
Well, there are some folks that rely on that every week and everything, and again, this isn't, this isn't taking money away from people, but if you rely on your paycheck every week to pay your bills, and you miss a week, one week, then you're...
Going backwards.
Yep.
So we need to go through that process. Other towns have done it, and it works. DRA's got a program, and I think Interlogo or whatever, got different programs, we can model that. That's a discussion that'll happen in '18, I hope.
And how do you work into it as far as, you haven't started in '18 as far as...
No, no, no. You put people on notice, you start the budget process, and, you know, by November, you're working people into what is going to happen.
Change your things.
Yeah, and then it's next January, things change. They have monthly automatic withdrawal, or weekly automatic withdrawals, they need to change those dates, that sort of thing.
But the other thing that goes with that, if we're going to do payroll only every other week, is we ought to do payables at the same time. Rather than making a check run for payables every week, do everything every other week.
Or break it up somehow.
Or alternate them.
Do the payables every 120 days, that's a paper money.
Where do we move on the issue we were here for? Is there a decision to be made today?
Which one?
The merit increase.
I think we tabled it, further study. I think we need to look at, is there a cost savings, is there an impact? Figure out the anniversary dates of all the employees and figure out who's when and who it may impact versus...
Is that a motion on your part?
Well, you can, I guess I will. I'll table my original motion to make merit increases.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
First of all, thank you to you employees that came in, but also to the other employees that picked up the telephone and spoke to, spoke to all of us.
Thank you for your...
Well, we don't want to be autocratic, but we do want to be efficient.
Totally.
So if there's efficiencies to be had, we'll certainly endeavor to get there. So, oh, last thing on the library. One thing, if you're going to bring that forward, one thing that's helpful is there going to be an increase in employment. Is there going to be a need for more expense, if you will, whether it's cleaning or...
Well, it's a bigger building.
Yeah, it's a bigger building, so we should do it.
So the utility costs will be somewhat...
Well, we don't, it'll be a whole lot more efficient.
Right.
No, if we did that for the new building, and I think it was a very minor increase, I think it was less than 10%. So I will let the trustees know that you will also be looking for that information. I'm sure they'll be able to provide it.
How's the circuit system?
Pumped up.
It was pumped last week.
Stinky business, isn't it?
Yeah, it certainly is.
Anything else from you folks? Anything else from the board? I have one, thank you. The police chief has not yet passed in four of our job performance reviews. For purposes of discussion, I made a motion that the board of selectmen instructed the chief to have those four job performance reviews into us within two weeks.
I'll second that.
Now, is there any discussion on that?
Was there a reason, did he give you a reason for that, or it just, you're, you're making an observation?
I'm making an observation. Unfortunately, we had to do this last year.
Yeah, I think if, you know, we need to be able to efficiently budget. And this, I mean, it goes back to our original conversation about step increases. The assumption in the police budget is going to be everybody gets a step increase.
Yes.
We had yet to see the job performance reviews, so how can they make that assumption? They can make that assumption because historically it's always happened.
Yes.
And I think we need to clear that up a bit. And if, if he wants to present a budget, then include step increases, then he needs to have all of his performance evaluations done and have to review them.
Yes. I sent a note to her to check the file to see if there's any outstanding.
Her, from any of them?
Oh, I thought that was for your correspondence.
Anything else for the selectmen to discuss?
We've talked about, we were meeting up with some insurance company, I forget the name.
Health, Health Trust.
Last week. I guess I'll report it one day.
Okay.
It doesn't seem to be a lot of clarity on savings, so...
I know, I checked with Jermaine, the folder that I gave you, and there's not a lot of change out there. But one thing I will make is, I've talked to, to our employees over the years, is please don't keep changing it. Continuity is important. Am I being accurate in what I say here?
Are they looking at a substantial increase this year?
We haven't got the increases yet.
Is that in late November or...
We're supposed to get them October 4th. We'll see if we do, I hope we do. And also the rates for the other two insurance companies that we're looking at. I don't want to, I'd just be careful if we say, "We're not changing insurance companies," because at that point in time, you've lost all control of the pricing.
Yes, right.
We have to be able to...
And, and we need to be sensitive to the impact on the employees, but if, we also have to make sure that we are are getting the best package that we can, including the cost of the package. And, you know, I, I can tell you over many years in the private sector that changing, you know, insurance carriers happens from time to time. Yeah, you don't want to do it every year, but sometimes then you just get out of whack enough that you end up going to somebody else. And, you know, with respect to health insurance and that sort of thing, unfortunately, sometimes it changes the networks of doctors that are available. But at some point, if the cost of staying with what you have is way out of whack with reasonable alternatives, and I say that from, from a, a cost impact on the employee, then you have to take that step. So you're absolutely right, you don't want to keep jumping around all the time, but...
It's a happy medium.
Right, you know, there, there, sometimes you get a disparity in there, and you're talking a, a huge, substantial cost difference between carrier A's program and carrier B's program. And the benefit that the employee has is about the same in both of them, but, you know, one of the things that happens is you have a, a different network of doctors, that's a, that can be impactful. But at the end of the day, you can't just keep saying, you know, "These, this is the one we have, and we just got to keep going with it forever."
I don't think that you should be.
But insurance company A may not want to provide a plan similar to insurance company B, which would save money and, and work this as well, so it's... And we used to be able to do multi-year insurance plans, but that was way before that.
But yes, obviously, some, some people have been here, as far as whatever period of time, to see changes. I saw the selectmen save $47,000 by changing insurance city here, and it still wasn't good enough for some people that, that were out there grumbling about the difference.
You know what I said to those people? "When we take our policy and compare it with the premiums you pay, and if you have an insurer that pays less, the town will hire them." They never came back. I had to get back to...
$47,000 isn't a lot of money to some people.
I have nothing else.
Oh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Could I have a final vote, please, on your motion, Chief Shagori?
Oh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you for keeping us honest.
No problem, just, you know, going to dot the i's.
And this is the revised pay structure with the COLA retroactive to...
And we can vote on that someday. Yeah.
Is there anything to do on those notes?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn second.
Aye. Hey, we get to that April 4th.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, please. Thank you for your...
Everyone have a nice weekend.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming in.